All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for July tenth, twenty twenty four. We have six council members present. Do we have any online, Ellen? Is there a seventh online?
No, just the six of you at this time.
The six of us, awesome. So all council members are present, except for council member Bloom. Uh, we also have the mayor, various staff members, council staff, and administrative staff present as well as members of the public. Welcome one and all. Um, first item of business is a pledge of allegiance. This will be given by Kalia Kravonic. Hopefully I did not screw that up too badly. She's a student from Taylorsville High School visiting us today.
Could everyone please stand? Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. You rarely have such enthusiasm. That was great. Our, uh, our next item on the agenda is public comment. This is your opportunity to address the council on pretty much whatever's on your mind. It doesn't have to be on the agenda this evening. Um, if you're online, obviously you need to raise your hand, let your intentions be known in the Zoom webinar. Uh, I do have one signed up in advance who would indicated a desire to speak, so we'll go first to Erin Barrow. Barrow? Barrow. I don't even know how to say that if you put wheel in front of it. And you have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Erin Barrow. I'm the mother of two, former PTA president, crossing guard, and a concerned citizen. I came here tonight to speak about the renewable energy crap program that West Jordan has the opportunity to join. I understand that this item has been removed from the agenda tonight because of the mayor's intent to veto it, but I still wanted to share my thoughts. First of all, I had to learn about this program from a third party. They told me the city council wanted to hear from the public before voting. So why then did I not hear from the city council? I have never seen any literature or articles from the city about the details of this program. I am afraid that the citizens of West Jordan are being left out of the discussion when it comes to potential options for making our community a cleaner place. My family is proud to live in West Jordan where you are leaders in supporting local businesses, providing beautiful parks and events for our citizens, as well as providing solid public services. West Jordan is making a name for itself and being a leader in so many ways. Why not take a stand for renewable energy and be a leader others can follow? If we truly care about clean renewable energy, we will not sit on the sidelines waiting for someone else to take the lead. I think this program could be a great asset to healing our state and help continue to make our air cleaner. Please don't let politics get in the way of doing something good and lasting for our community and that can influence communities around us. Just because you may have voted no back in twenty nineteen doesn't mean you have to vote no again. Educating yourself on a topic and having humility to say, I was wrong before, now I understand and feel differently, is a great leadership quality. But also maybe you'll educate yourself and still vote no. That's fine, but make sure to include your citizens in the conversation. Trying something new requires a leap of faith, not only faith in the process and program, but also faith in your citizens that they will stand beside you and help grow this program. Please trust us and reach out to us. We're all busy with families and jobs, but we care about our community. We care about a cleaner future for our children and grandchildren. If you don't include us and let us know the cost as well as the long-term benefit, we can't make informed decisions. I know that being an elected official is hard work and I appreciate all that you do for West Jordan. So please continue to serve us as we would like to serve alongside you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the, uh, the city council on this or anything else? Go ahead and come on up. And, uh, since we don't have your card, go ahead and just give us your name and, uh, we'd like to know if you live in West Jordan.
Awesome. Yeah. So I'm Kamikowski. Uh, I'm a resident of Taylorsville, so just next door. Yeah, and I'm just here to express my gratitude. So thank you so much for allowing a bunch of the services and things that we have in our community, like the library. I think it's great for the youth. I just wanna, just a quick express of my gratitude. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and you're welcome. Come on up, uh, next one. And I know who this is. This is Kalia Kravonic. I may be butchering that. If I am, go ahead and correct me.
Yeah, okay. So I'm a also student from Taylorsville High School and I'm taking the US government class for the summer. And for my class, I got the opportunity to come to a student council meeting. So I just wanted to come up here because I'm required to make a comment, but also to say thank you for everything you do. And I'm so grateful for this opportunity to come learn about the city. I'm so grateful for everything. I'm grateful for the running water and everything. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. And I think Taylorsville has city council meetings too that you can attend, by the way, but, but we're happy to have you. Don't get me wrong.
And I'm a Taylorsville alumni, so go Warriors.
Well, there you go. There's one in every bunch. Um, all right. Uh, is there anybody else who'd like to address the council in the room? I'm seeing nobody else rush to the microphone. Is there anybody online with a hand raised, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, of the two attendees, uh, there is one with the screen name of Joram sixty-four that has their hand raised.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to Joram sixty-four. If you could give us your name, you should be able to unmute. And, uh, and we'll give you three minutes, but give us your name as you come up. Thanks.
Uh, good afternoon, council chair. I apologize. I forgot to change my name in there. Uh, my name is Alberto Jerome Miranda. I am a West Jordan city resident. Um, I had hoped to attend this meeting in person to present my public comment today, but you know, my schedule being what it is, I have to be satisfied with soon today. Um, hopefully I can provide a little bit of a contrasting opinion to, uh, one of the previous public commenters. Um, and I would first like to preface this by saying that I generally support initiatives that aim to improve our air quality in our valley, especially during the winter months during the inversion. I am also in support of goals that move to increase the availability of renewable power sources as well. More options are always better than fewer options, as I see it. I however, have some concerns with this particular initiative. I know the mayor is planning on voting it down. And I also was not aware that it had been taken off the council agenda, but I'll talk about it anyway. Uh, the first issue I have with the action are with its end goals. According to the presenters last month, uh, they are following a net zero carbon emissions goal to set forward or that is set forward by various, uh, national and international agencies. Now, if we put my skepticism of net zero as an appropriate goal to address climate change aside, I think it's appropriate to point out that anyone with the goal to reduce emissions to net zero levels should not be looking at renewables like solar, wind, and hydro as the only solution. These sources are only reliable in certain areas and each has their own costs and trade-offs as well. If you're serious about reducing emissions, you need to look at all the options. This initiative, for example, doesn't include fysial power or nuclear as an option. This isn't without its costs either, but it does have the unique capability of being able to reliably generate power that we need while eliminating power emissions almost entirely. Something unfortunately, solar, wind, and hydro and geo are not capable of doing alone. Uh, renewables like these are great to augment the power grid, but they cannot move us to a net zero goals alone. This brings me to my main issue with the initiative and it's in its implementation. As the mayor and others have already mentioned, there exists programs already with the same goals as this program. This one is being reintroduced by the mission of the presenters to get more people to pay into the initiative. While I appreciate that there's still an opt-out option, I still think it goes a little too far into the compulsion side for a program that won't do what it claims to be setting out to do because it's relying solely on these renewable sources. It seems mainly as a mean for, for some individuals to feel better about their consumption and contributions to emission while not really doing much to address it at scale. And as the mayor also said last month, our technologies are already moving us.
Oh, sorry about that. A three-minute timer got you there, but I believe we got the, uh, the, the main gist of the comments. If, by the way, if, uh, you're not, um, able to speak tonight or you had more than three minutes, uh, worth of comment, we do have an email line that we accept comments on all the time, council comments, westjordan.u.gov. We also have a phone number, which I don't have in front of me, but you know, it's a phone number that's on our website that you can find and call us and leave us a voicemail. Also works as well, and we all get those. Uh, is there anybody else, uh, in the room? We'll give this one more call. Or Ellen, is there anybody else online? The hand raised?
No, there, there's no one online, but if, uh, if it would be okay, I can give you the phone number for those.
What's that? Go ahead.
The twenty-four hour comment line is eight oh one, five, six, nine. Now I can't remember.
I knew that. I knew those digits. I could have said that much.
So I think it's five oh, I, uh, hang on one sec.
I wanna say five.
Sorry. I think it's five oh five two, but the IT is very similar. So five zero, so five, six, nine, five, zero, five, two.
There you go. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, seeing no other public comments, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and go to the next item on the agenda is reports to council. We'll start with the city council. Anybody on the council like to report on goings on? Council member Whitlock.
Uh, I took the opportunity to go to the food truck and market last night um, and just want to shout out to our sustainability. I believe it was the chair who was there um, basically running the market. So thank you to that committee for helping with that event and uh, I got some wonderful sourdough cinnamon swirl bread. It was really good and I hate to say it, but that loaf's almost gone.
Council member Green.
I just wanted to, uh, thank the staff, uh, mayor, your staff. I know I sent an email the other day, but, uh, just a thank, uh, uh, a public thank you to the event staff and to all the other city staff and volunteers who helped make Western Stampede a, uh, great event. There's the, you know, it takes a lot, particularly at the rodeo itself, it takes a lot of volunteers to, to, uh, you know, and I know a lot of those are the Bowler family and so we appreciate them, but thanks to all the, all those that helped uh, to make the Western Stampede, uh, what it was this year. Uh, I did like the drone show. Uh, that was cool. Uh, but it was, it was, it was a great event over those three days. So thank you.
Thank you. Council member Bedore.
I'd also like to point out the, how much I enjoyed, uh, the festivities of this, uh, this long weekend. Not only with the, the rodeo, but all the, everything else going on. I had a great time. Uh, ferrying people on the golf carts with the mayor. We were passing each other quite often as we went back and forth, getting people to the rodeo and also the bingo calling, which, uh, uh, council member Shelton and I pretty much, uh, put in many, many hours and, uh, and, um, my fault, I, I used way too many prizes the first night, so that, uh, that messed us up after that point. Uh, I would like to point out though, something I was going to talk about, but then other, uh, citizens have, uh, have joined in. Um, just to make sure that those, uh, listening to non-record know that uh, I had, I had felt that the entertainment at the first night of the rodeo especially uh, was not very representative of what we want in West Jordan. I thought it was very inappropriate. I am someone who has spent a vast majority of my life as a comedic entertainer. Um, and I've hired a lot of entertainment and you know, I know that sometimes what you think you're gonna get is not what you get. So I don't put this on the staff, but I want those listening to know that the staff has made adjustments to this and, and that individual will not be back uh, again, doing the rodeo, but I think it also gives us an idea that, uh, what I was so pleased with was how many people responded that they didn't enjoy that either. And it made me feel good that other people, uh, spoke up in what they think should be entertainment here in West Jordan. And I enjoyed that and I enjoyed the response from our city, certainly much more that I enjoyed the entertainment on that, uh, on that first night. And I will be honestly say that I did not go to the next two nights because of that. And that was the main reason why I didn't bother to go to the rodeo the next two nights, even though I had tickets. I gave them away as part of bingo. Uh, I just didn't want to be a part of that. So, uh, again, I appreciate the, uh, staffs, uh, what they did. And I also appreciate those citizens who reached out to us saying that they didn't think that that was a part of West Jordan either.
Thank you. Any further council comments? Council member Shelton, there you go.
Uh, just wanted to thank staff and everybody who's involved, uh, just echo, uh, other council members, uh, comments. It was a lot of work and out time effort and, um, you can tell that there's a lot of love that goes into this event as well that we had over the weekend. Um, this isn't just people punching a, a time card. These are people who really love their community and love serving their community and I'm very grateful for it. Uh, so that's what I had. Thank you.
Yep, and I'll just echo those comments as well. Um, I didn't, I wasn't at the rodeo long enough on Thursday night to hear uh, the, the offended comments, but having heard about them, I'm really glad that staff made, uh, corrections so that it didn't happen the next two nights. That was really, um, very much appreciated. So glad to hear about that. Um, and great event. Had fun at the carnival, had fun at the at, at the various events and it was, it was a lot of fun. So appreciate that. Uh, next up on the agenda is the council office. Oh, council member Bloom is raised. Council member Bloom, sorry, I missed your hand there.
It's okay. No, I mean, everybody said everything I was gonna say as well. So I echo, echo everything that's everybody has said and what I appreciated the most was the reaction and the response from our staff members in our city. I think showed how much heart and love that we have and care that we have for our city. I remember I was sitting in the audience so uncomfortable with, with the entertainment, but to know that I wasn't alone and others weren't. We spoke up to say, this is not right. This is not what our city is about. We are friendly neighbors. We love each other and we want to come together as a community because where we live matters. I see the good coming out of this and thank you for everyone who spoke up. Thank you for the text messages, the phone calls, the emails. It is so much appreciative and it shows how much we respect our city and why we live here. So thank you and thank you for the staff and everybody who put on the amazing event.
Thank you. And just for the record and the minutes, uh, council member Bloom joined about six oh two. So make sure we've got that on there. All right. Uh, now we'll go to council office reports. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. Uh, a couple of things I want to report to you. Number one is, uh, for those of you who have served for a number of years, you will notice that, uh, we're pretty much fully functional with the tech. You can see that we've got the picture-in-picture. We're able to change the graphics and, uh, make the camera small and the, the graphic large. So we're gonna, we're gonna follow around, your discussions with that as we move forward. I want to just thank our IT department and admin services who are prioritizing, uh, getting this room functional for you. Um, they've put in a lot of hours. We've put in staff a lot of hours, so we have the opportunity to, uh, provide this transparency to the residents of the work that you do for, on, in behalf of the city. So, uh, we're grateful. Uh, it's really key to a couple of things. Number one is some additional programming by the contractor. And number two, dedicating some network, uh, capability to this space and the workroom space. Uh, so the network is able to handle the amount of data that's being transmitted and received by this room. So just, just wanna thank them for prior prioritizing it at, uh, several of you have commented about how to make this work uh, as soon as possible and, and we've done that. So I think I would say we're probably ninety-nine point eight percent there. Uh, but we're very appreciative of that. Um, also the annotators are working. So as we go into land use in, in future discussions, we're able to, uh, illustrate that for you, the staff and the residents that are, are viewing online. And I'm very happy that there's other cities that have contacted us previously on how we do this. And I do believe that, uh, we are a leader uh, in being able to provide this technology to the benefit of our residents. With that, I would like, uh, our analyst, um, Mr. Hallmark to just touch briefly on the status of the youth council progress as we get ready for next year. I will say that they, um, did walk with the members of the council in the parade. So we had the council members and the youth council that could attend uh, in the parade, but I want, uh, Mr. Hallmark just to give you an update on, uh, next year's class.
As it stands right now, we have twelve members for next year's youth council, which is up a whole three from the previous year. And we are regularly accepting applications and interest. So I know you three there, Taylorsville High School students, you go to Taylorsville. But if you live in West Jordan, check out our youth council and otherwise I think Taylorsville also has a youth council. So, um, we're meeting with our youth council next month, uh, prior to school starting. And then we look forward to a full school year, working with the council and seeing what they're able to accomplish.
That's a whole thirty-three percent increase. That's, that's impressive. All right. Uh, next item up is the mayor's report. We'll go to Mayor Burton.
Good evening. Thank you for coming and joining you today. And just as a start off, tomorrow I have my mayor open office hours. So if you'd like to come talk to me about C, C R E A or anything else, I'd be happy to entertain you. Thank you. Okay, so Dunkin' Donuts is replacing Arby's over on Ninetieth South. And we expect that to be open in a couple more weeks when we have an actual open date for a grand opening. We will let you know. But Dunkin' Donuts, if you're not familiar, they started back east and they are the originators of a donut with a little handle on it. So you could dunk it in your coffee and not get your hands wet. So that's a Dunkin' Donut. Also, right next door to Dunkin' Donuts is the H Mart and that parking lot continues to be filled. So their, their newness has not worn off and hopefully when the newness does wear off, the customers will continue to come from all areas of the valley. So that's been a great draw for us. Over across the street from Heartland Elementary on Seventieth South, as you know, that's the speed limit on that area. Well, you may not know it, but anyway, the speed limit there is thirty miles an hour. But the speed limit in Midvale, as you get to there, is forty-five miles an hour. People don't do a real good job, so down sometimes. And we have a crosswalk there for the kids to get to school. We have been working for years before I was the mayor of getting this bridge put in. We now have sufficient funding that we are moving forward on that bridge. We got another grant last month that will, so we're gonna finish up the drawings and the property on the school site has been donated to us by the Jordan School District. So we have a place to land the bridge. Otherwise you would have had to get there and kind of jump off. Well, not really, we would have done that, but anyway. So that's making progress and it's anticipated that as soon as school gets out, we should have all of our ducks in a row and start construction. So it's finished before school starts again in twenty twenty-five. Thirteenth West, this is the roller coaster that a contractor put in that you probably have heard about. I'm happy to tell you that that, pardon me, you've driven it. Well, the sad news is, is going away this week. They are this week and starting the work to replace that so that it meets our Cindy's city standards. That one did not meet our city standards. And that'll start happening this week. So by the end of the week, if you don't want to ride a roller coaster, you can drive down Thirteenth West and it'll be much better.
Do we know mayor's the, right now on Thirteenth, they've got that one section that's just one lane? Is that going away as well?
That will be going away very soon because the construction on the, on, and I can't, I'm not gonna give you a date because I'll be wrong if I do. But the section between Seventy-Eighth and Ninetieth will be completed soon and then they'll be moving to the section between Seventy-Eighth and Seventieth. That's where they're going next.
So when does the, the project from Ninetieth to Seventy-Eighth with the widening, when are we starting that?
We're starting that this year.
Okay.
Okay, next please. Oh, is that all? Okay, that's all. I'll, uh, let you ask Paul if he has anything.
Can tell us more.
All right.
Life is great.
If we don't have slides, it didn't happen. Uh, all right, city administrators report. And today we have our assistants, assistant deputy, what do they call you? Uh, city administrator in waiting. I don't know what they call them. That's Morgan Scally now. Uh, Paul Jerome.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, the only thing we have is a, um, presentation by Chief Maxfield from, from the fire department. So we'll call him forward.
Good evening. Oh, I don't have a presentation, but I do have a report. Um, did want to just update everybody on the Fourth of July and fireworks. Um, it was a relatively good year. We did have quite a few fires that night. It was busy. But as far as dollar loss or property loss, everything was very minimal. Most of the fires that we responded on were typical of the Fourth of July holiday. They were dumpsters, garbage cans where discarded fireworks were allowed to smolder and, and reignite it. Um, did, did lose a few trees and, and had a few field fires. But in general, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't overwhelming or terrible. As in past years, we staffed more apparatus than we typically, typically do. And, um, as I mentioned, they were, they were busy throughout the evening. I will compile, um, a more formal report that goes into the details of each of the fires and stuff once we get through the twenty-fourth of July holiday. But, uh, just to let you know, it, it was relatively uneventful for us. So any questions?
Council member Lamb.
Thank you, chief, for all you guys do. I know this wasn't a huge issue in West Jordan, but I, I did hear about a, a family that lost their home because they put the smoldering fireworks in their can. And then they put their can in the garage, which we won't go there. But, um, is there any kind of, I, I don't know if we can do any kind of education, uh, through the city or through Tawny and maybe talk about not putting smoldering fireworks in the garbage because someone's gonna do it again. I mean, you said someone did do it and.
Yeah, it ha- it happens every year and that is one of the messages we try to get out is properly discarding used fireworks. I know Tawny's group did send out some information on social media that, that mentioned that. Um, but yeah, if, if there was one thing, I mean, everybody tries to be safe with fireworks, but it seems like that is the one thing that we run into every year is properly disposing of them so that they don't reignite.
Perfect. Thank you.
And, and chief, I just wanted to, uh, double check. I heard a report that there was a fire, a field fire at the Ron Wood Park.
Yeah, there was. That was probably the, the biggest event that we had in West Jordan that evening. We had multiple fires going on at the same time, but we did have a small field fire out there. And as far as fireworks caused, um, I went through the reports and kind of looked at them. And just at first glance, I would say we, we had, I think in the report, maybe that came, um, from the city today or yesterday, we had about twenty fires during the last seven days. And I could say out of those twenty seven or eight, we could probably safely say were, were related to fireworks. Others potentially might have been, but mostly it was things like that. It was a garbage can or a dumpster that caught on fire somewhere and more than likely that's what the cause was.
Right. Um, just, I just wanted to bring up that Ron Wood because A, it's in a city park, B, it's west of fifty-six hundred west. So two strikes against, you know, whoever's doing it. I don't know if we do what the state does when it comes to fires that are set when it comes to enforcing liability on, you find out who did it and.
Yeah, yeah, people can be held liable for, for sure.
And you do that.
Yep.
Um, but those, those kinds, just something to keep in mind as we, we have planned for a future agenda later in the year to look at our fire restrictions map and make sure that it makes sense. Um, we've mentioned before why it may or may not make sense, uh, in all cases, so.
And we're, with regard to that, we're compiling some data for the last few years and hopefully some maps that will show where we've had fires, what years, what causes were, things like that. So that is, as you discuss it further in the coming months, we can, you can do it in form.
We should probably definitely restrict them la- launching from trash cans and dumpsters. I think that's pretty much decided, right? All right. Thank you, chief.
Yep, thank you.
Chair.
I have a.
Miss Bloom. Go ahead. Council member Bloom, sorry.
I appreciate that I'm virtual while I'm on a work trip. This means a lot. Um, two, I am so grateful for the signage. I did notice a lot less people letting off fireworks in, uh, west of fifty-six hundred west this year. That was amazing having all of those signs out. Sure, there are, of course, as always, will be people who don't care. But thank you for all of the signage work because I, I did notice to me, just anecdotically, it made a difference in my neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. And, and really kudos to Tawny and her team for having those printed for us and, and helping get that information out there.
Yep. I was gonna say the same thing since I live in the same neighborhood.
Yep, perfect.
Mr. Anderson, anything else?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, uh, the, the chief mentioned, um, gathering some maps for a future discussion. The council has already kind of asked to go over those maps and that report in September for the committee of the whole work session. So I'm working with the chief to make sure we have the information. So I'm working with the chief to make sure we have the information that you'd like to discuss for that meeting here in a couple of months.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Yes. And I also appreciate all those who, uh, did not light off fireworks in my neighborhood this week or this last week where they weren't allowed. Uh, Mayor Burton, you have a light up.
Yes, I have a, a more clarified answer to your question on Thirteenth West. I said we're starting it this year. We are, but we're doing the property acquisitions this year. So people won't see it happening this year. The physical work will happen after the property gets act, uh, property acquisitions are complete. So it'll be next year when you see the physical work happen on the street.
You heard it here first, folks. All right. Uh, is that all from, uh, staff? All right, perfect. We'll go to the, uh, only business item on the agenda tonight. We have a very short agenda this evening. This is business item. This is five A resolution twenty-four dash oh twenty-nine. Amending this West Jordan City Consolidated Fee Schedule is staff.
Just when we think we're done, we find things that we forgot. So I omitted the development review fees for, um, kids to be on the fee schedule. So we added that. I just forgot to put it on there. And then also the water section has been a section that's been omitted, um, since forever. So because the consolidated fee schedule was actually, um, started by, uh, when I became, when I came to the city. And this was just number fee on there. So we'd like to present that to you. That it is a fee that's already been being charged. It's been being charged for decades. Um, it's for sprinkler systems for commercial businesses and residential, um, homes that have a sprinkler system. Um, and then we're, we're wanting to, you to be aware that we're going to be adding a service to the passport office. There are many times when someone comes in to get a passport that they're required to bring in a cashier's check or money order. It's the only thing the US State Department will take in for payment of a passport. And a lot of times if they're not prepared or haven't read the material before they come in for their appointment, we're having to send them away to go get a money order or cashier's check somewhere else. And then they come back and then, um, kind of we get behind as far as processing passports. So we're going to be issuing money orders in the passport office. It would be for passports only and they'd be only money orders issued to the US State Department, um, mostly for risk, um, purposes. So, um, we're proposing those fees be added to the consolidated fee schedule with this resolution and, um, present it to the council. Thank you.
Gang. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Chair Jacob. Um, you'd mentioned cashier's check and money orders. They also take personal checks as well, don't they? Or do they only take those two?
They only take those two.
Okay, thank you.
Do they take cards? You, you can't pay with a card either? I'm trying to figure out how I paid.
US State Department likes guaranteed funds.
Trying to figure out how I paid for my passport now. It's been six years, so I don't remember, but interesting. Okay. Right. All right. Uh, any questions for staff or discussion from the council? This is a heavy, heavy item.
Thank you.
I'm going to move to approve. I still don't understand why this is resolution, but I'm, I'm going to move to approve resolution twenty-four dash zero twenty-nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitlock amid furious button pressing to get in on that one. Uh, any discussion to the motion to approve?
No, I think this is a great move. Um, having just got passports for two of my kids and having to go to the grocery store to get the money order before going there. I think this will save a step and I think this is the right direction. And, and I think this is absolutely great. So thank you for doing this.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any, uh, further discussion to the motion? All right, seeing none, let's, uh, roll call vote it.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Chair Jacob.
Yes.
Thank you. I shall that motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
Okay, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. I'm going to say it really slow.
Move to approve consent items.
Second.
Okay, motion to remove, a motion to approve the consent items, which is the minutes, uh, from the previous three or so meetings. By Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitlock. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's why they call it consent. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. This is the second fastest city council meeting that I can recall in recent history. I'll go ahead and at the end of the agenda, I'll declare us adjourned. We'll see you next week for committee of the whole.